November eighteenth, regular monthly meeting, Lee County Board Supervisor George, Commissioner Ed Murphy, Pastor Ryan, Commissioner Ben Church.
Our head. Dear heavenly gracious Father, we give thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. Lord, we ask that you be with this meeting, that you oversee it, Lord. Lord, let your will be done, Lord, as servants of the community and the county. We just give these men the authority and power, and we just ask that your will be done in all that they do. We give thanks, Lord, for a country where veterans allow us to pray before meetings and have meetings, Lord, so that democracy can rule, and we give thanks for that, Lord. We ask that you be with all those that came tonight, that you put a protective hedge about them, their families as they travel to and from this meeting, and just be with us all throughout this evening. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a public hearing on the zone text amendment. Lee County Board Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November eightheenth, two thousand and twenty-five, six o'clock P. M. in the General District Courtroom, Lee County Courthouse located in Johnville, Virginia, to solicit them to propose zone text amendments. Amend Article eleven to redefine tourist town. Amend Article four, Section four dash one, subsection three, special use to include silo. Amend Article four, Section four dash one, subsection three, special use to include campground subject to provisions of Section five through sixteen of the disorder list. Amend Article five, adds from Section five through sixteen for campground regulations including applicability area and density, yard separation, occupancy, compliance. Amend Article eleven to include the following definitions: campground, camping unit, and campsite.
Good evening. These zone text amendments were brought before you a few months back. We tabled it. My understanding was y'all wanted to have some more time to discuss it to talk to Planning Commission. So after a public hearing on data center, while Mr. Wright was at the Planning Commission meeting, this was brought up under our business and discussed. They were still pretty angry about not moving on the thirty day occupancy, thirty consecutive days on occupancy for the campgrounds. I think their point of view is the consecutive days, by having that language there, they felt if someone was there, if they were, you know, a worker that was staying at a campground, within a month's time, they would have time to go home, and they would start the clock over. So the only thing that we really changed from the previous public hearing was the exception in that with Mr. Wright's advice that if you obtain a valid building permit to construct a permanent dwelling in Lee County, you may stay in a campground until completion of dwelling. If the permit lapses for any reason, the individual must abide by their loved ones' time of strike. Essentially, you took them one shot at it for any reason, the permit expired, or there's any reason that they did not complete the dwelling, and the permit lasts, you know, they would have to go back to that thirty consecutive day time period. Generally speaking, if someone owns property, they're going to probably put their RV on their own land. But we felt like that was an option, that if they were staying at a campground, but if they were looking to build permanent residence here, we could give them that longer time span to stay there without having to move to Lee. Outside of that, anything else is the same as we heard before. If you have any questions about any of it, I'll answer your questions.
We got a question for the court? Anybody here speak up just? No one kind of pulled, close it here. Make a motion to approve that amendment?
Second.
Motion second, I'll favor.
Aye.
Close. If y'all would, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda so we can move Mr. Summ, drug, Nick, he's got another engagement, he's got to attend, and immediately get out of here.
Aye.
Motion second, I'll favor.
Aye.
Close. Mr. Summ?
Okay. Thank you. Uh-oh. Let me hand you this report as I can, just a few things. Got to kind of go over. So it's been a little bit since I've been getting back with you. I wanted to come to my, just kind of do a check in. I don't really have a whole awful lot. I'll just kind of go over and cover some of the things real quickly. Then I did want to touch the six items. So first of all, I want to go over, actually, it's the second item that's on the report there, and that's the accomplishment. So during the last several months, we've been patching ahead of the paving schedules. That's some of the work that we've had to do. We've also done patching work through Pennington Gap, some along the seven fifty eight, six seventy two, and then also over in the Olinger area. We worked with Mr. Wright. There was a section of six seventy six, Bim Path, that was showing on our records as being was done as a previous project. As we did research, we found that for some reason, which can happen sometimes, but normally when you do research on them, didn't do real thorough with this one, but my experience over many years has been that you will have a project from point A to point B, and then sometimes there will be occasions occur and that somebody won't want the project done at the time, and so they'll modify the limits of the project, and there'll be like a section that's not done in between and or at the end. And Bim Path was one of those situations to say with that. We have some funds that always in a six-year plan, they show it's a smidgen of discretionary funds that we have, and so we talked with Mr. Wright, and all it takes is the consent of the county administrators, because those funds are obligated, y'all obligated. And so we used that, and we surfaced through that section of Bim Path. That should be, I guess Mr. Kibb will probably down in your district, it's down there, it's right off of the Nursery Road, back in there, just a little ways. So we took care of that. The item that I did want to kind of talk a little bit about specifically is I wanted to address to you in person today, that I know you all had some concerns about the mowing. And so we had a really rough year with mowing. Part of what is not on this report is that we spent a great deal of time with our crews having to do repairing flood damages that had occurred in February. And we've been under a deadline, and in some counties, we're just getting finished up, that we serve, we've been under a deadline in order to have that work completed, in order to receive one hundred percent female reimbursement on those projects. So our guys have worked a lot on projects that have taken them away from regular maintenance through the summer, a lot of them even in Lee County, Randall Christians crew in Dryden have been busy as well. To compound that, it rained a lot, and we also had tractor breakdowns that were, you know, seemed like when we would get to where we could mow, and it wasn't raining, then we'd have a tractor breakdown. And so I do apologize that it took us so long trying to get all the mowing done. We actually are still trying to do some work, like with the bin max, of trying to lay some slopes back, and that's the type of work, like with brush and stuff that we use, y'all seeing the long arm, probably that's the bush hog attachment on the end. And we will be continuing to do that all through the winter as well. That's something we do every year. We've had to, also, we've done some dangerous tree removal by our contractors. That's something that's usually ongoing through the year as well. Now, as we transition into the winter, asphalt plants are just about ready to close, and so the big heavy hot mix patching, as we call it, will soon be, will soon lose asphalt or access to that asphalt, and so we'll have to use a lot of the cold mix patch. So it'll be more of the specific, just pot over pot patching as we go through the winter. And then on our gravel roads, we'll be working to attempt to try to keep them in good shape. That again depends on weather and how much they're washboarded. Something just for keep in mind, I know y'all get calls sometimes on some of the gravel roads that might be in your area, is that during this time of the year, unless it's something that's a real muddy condition, we try to sparingly put gravel down onto those roadways, because what we typically find out is then we get into a snow condition in the winter, then it's easy just to plow the gravel right off the roadway. So we're kind of getting into activities that will be more labor intensive through the winter, not using a lot of materials, but we will have maintenance work that's ongoing. Just as an other note for you too, as well, along the line for the winter, is that we have sixteen contractor plow and spreader trucks signed up in the county. We have seventeen contractor graders. We have one contract motor grader. We have ten emergency CBL operators that will be working for us. And we have twenty-three full-time VDOT operators that will be occupying the trucks and our equipment over two shiffs, and sixteen VDOT dump trucks, VDOT motor grader, two VDOT motor graders and two backhoes. And finally, with the report just mentioned, is the real recipe that we have of approving the funds to get ready to go is Back Valley around six oh three. That's in the environmental review stage, and we should be ready to go on that way next summer. Okay? So that's kind of a real quick rundown, and like I said, my intent was to kind of see if you had any questions or need me to go write anything down that I need to check on and get back to you on.
Yeah, I've got one there on Stone Mountain Road in Olinger.
Okay.
Where with that slide had happened a few years ago.
Okay.
There's some water coming down through there, and really eroded the ditch line pretty deep, and the road is narrowed right there at that slide. I've had some people raise some concerns about it, and we was up there for a few fire EMS calls.
Okay.
No sound, but I didn't got there, actually an accident there a long time ago.
Okay, we'll put it down and get it checked.
Okay.
Okay.
One thing I've got real quick is from the side of England Furniture.
Yes.
If you could check that.
The ditch lines are up.
Yeah, that's kind of a complex issue there with it, but we have had our greenies people looking at that, we just haven't gotten a report back on it yet.
Is it? Has spraying been stopped as far as like the guardrails and stuff?
On the guard?
Yeah.
What, guardrail repairs?
Well, just spraying, I'm killing.
Oh, spraying, okay, I thought you meant. The spraying on the guardrails has been cut back dramatically because of environmental, it has been for several years. We, unfortunately, it is very rare that we are able to do any kind of cuts in spraying now. And a lot of your area, what limits us to be able, when we are able to spray, is because your roads are right next to the creek, and they will not let us spray in those areas.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of places you don't, you can't even see the guardrail.
I know, yeah.
And also, some of the signs that's been put up, some of the roadway signs that's been, especially those ones that's put up, about five around each curve showing it was a curve for people that didn't realize they were in a curve, I guess.
Yeah.
But some of those signs, you can't, I mean, they're just covered.
It's difficult to deal with. We've got that problem in all four counties we deal with.
I just, you know, it just makes me wonder who's thinking, you know, about putting up those signs and all, they weren't going to be able to control the vegetation.
Yeah, well, they put them up, it's kind of like, things, their department puts them up, they leave it for this department to arrange.
I understand.
Is six oh three going to be tar and chipped, or is it going to be asphalt?
That will be asphalt.
Okay. And I've been approaching about mowing from Blackwater and Jonesville, which you done addressed that, and I understand we've got an onslaught of Johnson grass, and I know how fast it grows, but like I say, that has been a concern. A friend of mine from Jasper, he is concerned, he was, and I told you it probably couldn't happen, but he was requesting the speed limit be dropped over there, because part of that, he says, is the old road, and.
On twenty-three?
On twenty-three.
Yeah, that's.
And he said that, he talked to somebody in the fire department, said they had five wrecks in one week over there, and he said it's, it's just.
Unfortunately, when the traffic engineers will look at that, then they, and we brought it up, and they're aware, we look at, you know, safety type measures. I know there's been some discussion about that, but lowering the speed limit, I don't think it's going to be that criteria.
I didn't, there is part, some of it, he says, is the old road.
I know exactly where the accidents are and are coming. It's, some of them are around up past Jackie Christians', their house, right up the road, coming up around, you come over the hill, down that little dip right in there. It's like they get, they launch through there and run across the roadway, is one of the areas.
And up at St. Charles, at Jeff Dean's cold temple, right there, the railroad tracks makes a perfect dam in the road right there, and it stands during the wintertime, during all the rain. And it's, water stands in there, it's probably five or six, seven inches deep right there, and when it freezes solid and then goes to breaking through, but it's. We'd say probably not much can be done for that unless you just fill it full of asphalt one of these days, when you.
That active, active river area?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's the problem we get into with that, is that we were today, and in other meetings, we were having discussions about, like, over there in Dick City, where the trails, you know, the overpasses is, that, you know, the law is, is that they look at, river was there first. So it's not them coming across us, it's us coming across here.
But it's just a.
But we'll, we'll look and see, but and sometimes what we were able to approve by the law, that we can work in there.
Well, it's, like I say, they just, the railroad just has it dammed up there, and if it was just brought up to just fill the ends of it would help. Because like I say, during the wintertime, during the hard freezes, I mean, that thing freezes solid right there, it just stays till.
You're worried with the railroad situation we got, but I will, I will get it checked into and see if there's any way we can do it. I'm sure Randall's aware of it.
Blue all road and District Board. We voted last year to fund that and move forward with payment. What's the status on here, when am I starting?
I don't have the six-year plan, do you?
I don't have it. We've put it in, we put it in the six-year plan last time we talked about the six-year plan.
Okay.
So I mean, you're probably looking for.
Okay, yeah.
But what it said in that report, was it supposed to begin twenty twenty-six? That is going to pass state entirely?
If it's on there for that, then it should be, should be entirely, we'll be starting environmental. But let me look, Mr. Kibb, just to be sure of the exact date, and I will get that back to you on there to see. Because one thing that makes sure that I'm also clear on is that sometimes those plans, they will show that the road comes like in fiscal year, say, twenty-six. That starts, well, you know, that could be any time from that year or the next spring until it's in there. So I'll just have to check if you're sure whether it's a fall project or whether it's a spring project, but I'll be back and get to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Six oh three, that what you said? Blue, blue all road.
Blue, all red.
Okay, anything else? No. Okay. All right, well, again, I did want to come talk to you, make sure about the mowing. We're going to look to see if we can do some things, try to, to try to improve it next year. Hopefully, we want to have a flood and a total rain out for the season and all that that will affect us, and we're looking at trying to revise some of the equipment that we use too. So, you know, we did do some of that by contract in the past, but budget limitations and stuff that we have, we just, it's something we had to do, take in-house to do that. So it's like we run into things, so, you know, whenever we have disasters or things like that occur, then yes, we, we get percentages and things of that back, but sometimes that takes a while, so we have to deal with those costs down there maybe for a certain time too. And of course, snow, if snow is over, then that's not a reversible thing there with that, and that's statewide, some heavy snow season as well. But I wanted to let you know that I did hear your concerns, and I tried to push them the best that I could given the situations that we were given. So just want to let you know, appreciate coming to see you, and I will try to get back sometime after the first of the year, I'll coordinate with, with, probably on that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Our chance to, if y'all have any.
This is one of our siblings, so forgive us, okay?
We understand your struggle. Department reports. Treasurer's report. Open the fourth pocket, pressure.
This is B., my, my first time here. My name's Brian Foltz. I just took over as captain at the St. Charles Rescue Squad. I know that there's been several issues come up with that squad in the past. Most recently, the coup take over, basically that a gentleman tried to come in with four signatures and petitions and all that to bring to you, to pretty well take over the squad. After that, Jeff Oats resigned as the captain, Don Brandon resigned as the second officer in charge. That fell to me, and it's my understanding that we were giving a six thousand dollar check monthly to the squad that was agreed upon and approved with Jeff as captain. Also understand that that was paused until we kind of reached some kind of resolution, everybody see, you know, what's going on, what kind of changes or what we may have going on at that squad. It's not being an easy task to get that on track, but we started pretty low, with about two thousand dollars in the account. Being, it cost to contact with our billing company. We've made some changes to our billing, that's increased our rates for our base rates. Our mileage has increased, our referral payouts have increased. Our call volume is staying about the same, but I know we are in a small area, and we don't have a whole lot of coverage area there, but we are assisting, responding to calls in other parts of the county. We had forty-eight total calls, thirty-five of those were outside of our area, which is, you know, we enjoy being able to work with other departments, and we're trying to build a relationship with other departments to provide that mutual aid anytime it's needed. Our billable calls had gone up. We had to go back and pay light bills, water bills, insurance bills, all these back bills that come up. We went back, took care of all of those with what we had, what we had coming into billing. It was to the point our insurance on our truck was about to be shut off within about three days of my takeover. So we changed that, our trucks were in bad dish repair. Now those are on top notch, we've got our trucks running great, we've got our tires, our brakes, we've got all these things that we need, supplies, so we're on an upward trend, and it's something that I'm very proud of, the people that I have that stood behind me with this have been exceptional, and we're motivated to keep that squad going. And we want it to be to a point where the squad is looked at as an asset to the county, and nothing outside of that. We want to make the county proud like some of these other departments that we work for. Along with that came quicker reports we're sending over to our billing company. I believe that was something that was brought up in a meeting here before, that was asked, Jeff was asked about that. We're also doing transports home. Now we can take some VLS transports from the hospital, take them back home, Chestnut Grove, Leaver's and places like that, so we have that additional billing that's starting to come in. We've got some staff that are paid pretty well, their salary every week, but we also have some volunteer staff. So that's helped, that's taken our payroll from what Jeff projected, about eighteen thousand down to ten thousand four hundred a month, is what we're projecting. So with the changes there, I'm not, I'm not asking for any change to what was already agreed upon with the six thousand dollar monthly check. I'm just here to ask if we can look at resuming that check. Our ultimate goal as Rescue Squad is to become self-sufficient, so that we don't have to have that. As of right now, that would help provide safety cushion for us, so I would know that our payroll is handled, our supplies are handled, and that's all we really want. Not looking for a major change there. Any questions?
What's your projected in, used to talk about your projected out, outflow, what's your projected income?
With the twenty-nine billable calls, unfortunately, most of the calls that we run are paid by Medicaid. We will be allowed a base rate of hundred, eight hundred dollars per call. Most of what I've got back with Medicaid is in between two and three hundred dollars. So with the twenty-nine billable calls, if we take those at the very low rate, do about sixteen of those at Medicaid, then we're looking at bringing in still about fourteen thousand per month if our call volume stays at forty-eight. That's just from November the first to the day. So we're looking at about fourteen thousand there just on those calls. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else public inspiration?
Sunny Brooks, District Board, when I just got this paper, I mean, I was at the school board meeting on November thirteenth, listened to the chairman talk about not wanting to pay for the forensic audit, and so I agree with him that, you know, it does need to take away from educational funds. So as I left the meeting, I was walking through the parking lot, and I got an idea. This may be crazy, but it's an idea. I walked by a sixty thousand dollar pickup truck, I was sitting there, with probably six or seven more thousand dollars add on. So why don't we sell that pickup truck to Caravan? And recoup at least sixty, where we get the whole thing back on sixty. Take the first forty of that and use it as a reality. Then take the remainder of what's left and buy, let the school board buy them a, another pickup truck. That would ninety-nine, ninety percent of the time, getting better gas mileage, and that dollar is just going to get. So through transparency, the both boards have worked together. So through transparency, the both boards have worked together and we solved the whole problem. Nobody can complain about money. Some of the things in here, talking about the hourly rates, I don't know where those figures come from. Where did the figures of 250 to 350 dollars an hour come from? Anybody know? I'm just asking, I don't know, I don't have a clue.
It'll be like a 40 put up, huh?
He did, yeah, he did. I hear the paper. Rick did an excellent job and reported exactly what he said.
You, you want to answer that?
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to have to.
Your questions about that topic when you get down.
Am I done?
When you get down, yeah.
But I mean, uh, my daughter's an attorney and she uses forensic accountants and that's a low rate. That is a low rate for what a forensic accountant's charged. So my solution to that problem is do swap. Make everybody happy. Board will have money for the forensic audit. The board will have trucks to drive around. Everybody be happy. Thanks.
I'm Ross Bongartner, Johnson, Comptech and Rags. I did some research about forensic audit and $40,000 would be upfront. And then after that would be the hourly rate added on for the hours. And here's what you get in a ten day. If you pay 100 to 200 dollars, you get entry level accountants. You don't want that. 200 to 400 would be mid-career, mid-career forensic accounting consultant. And if you want a highly experienced fraud examiner, you'll pay 400 by a hundred dollars an hour. You guys sit there being honest, not in his room, regardless of what the school board wants. You, Mr. Kidwell, thank you, said there's no credibility with either board the way things was going. You said that, that was the.
Trust, yes.
Yes, you did.
Trust, yes.
Now, do you want to have credibility or not? That's a few folks. The whole county is watching. I knew when this started what this would be. That's why I talked to you, Roger, and you said you got played, or you got played again. I'm what's right. I'm, I'm what's right for the county. Listen, to find out the truth and who took, bit of stories told and money stolen. Now, we need to find out, and when you find out where the money went, you can get some repayment from forgivory parties. That's how you get paid for some of it. That's how it's done. And I don't think the school board should have any input about the installation of anything. That gem went right there, we should have had the biggest say so in it. Cause who all is going to get the best good? You guys going to get put there too? You're going to let the prison or tag you down, you going to say anything? I don't think so. Subtle that man. Do you want to?
Don Bongartner. Me, to let the school board have oversight of that, the conflict of interest. Why should they be able to have any say so in the investigation? They're being investigated. That's a conflict interest and they can't do it. I, uh, talked to some people that does it for any audit and there's one that does it. And there's can't be anybody taking part in it. It has to be independent. Why would you, that'd be like a criminal and then you let him have to decide whatever things they're going to use or what they're going to use after. It's conflict interest where the school board has any oversight in any, uh, thing that's done. No, nobody should have any part of that. Social services, whoever, it's conflict interest. They're supposed to be independent and nobody can put pressure on them to do this, to do this, to do this. They have to be able to operate without people who know, know, right, here's what we want you to do. It's a conflict of interest and that's what I had to say. They should have no say so in it. They should have to pay for it, but they should not be able to have any oversight over it.
I guess my public ass can do pay for it. Correct. Anyone else? All right. Sports recommendations of the board.
I'm pleased.
Okay.
Well, I want to address this later to the editor. I had a conversation with one person, but when you talk to one person, you, you talked to two. I regret what I said. It looks bad and it is bad. But it was a one-on-one phone conversation with people that you grew up with. We've been in one another's homes and I'm sorry that he's led to this, but I guess that's all I've got to say.
As far as I'll go, I'm going to span on what I said when we first started talking about it. I'm going to vote to move forward with it regardless of whether the school board pays one red dime on it or not. And I, that will include out this board and everything else in the county. I'm not changing my mind on it.
As far as I know, they have no oversight, the school board have no oversight on it. Unless I missed something that we didn't yet. Where that came from, but we, that's not true.
I've been talking with some people in the, uh, seminary community and I have a gentleman that's interested in, uh, seeing if we'd be able to put some dumpsters up there for the people in the community since we've had to move the ones in driving. It's a pretty good little drive up there anyway. And, uh, I'm going to speak to the board about that, see if they'd be interested in entertaining that sometime in the.
Duck up your business.
Yeah, uh, that would be invested in public funds. We could, I don't know if that's a property, rent property, I don't know what that would be, but that would be investment. So I would think we could talk about that.
Yeah, I just want to bring it up anyway. I told people around, work and try to find a place and that way it's out there, everything. And I want, uh, to thank all the fire EMS personnel, especially this past month, we've been pretty busy with calls, uh, and the, uh, fire season here, we've had a lot of stuff going on in Pennington area, you're likely, everybody's seen that. You know, myself, I'm, my place, we do, uh, 24/7 coverage and just me and my wife do the EMT and part of it. I know we've been busy and everybody else hasn't since we've had the closure of Pennington and a few other things. We've, uh, all the agencies have came together and have done really good. Just want to give a big shout out to all of them for all the hard work and efforts that they do.
I just got a couple of things, uh, what up Ben, unless I missed something, I thought we already voted.
We did.
As the, uh, politics, I don't know why it's even a question. Second of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Foltz for stepping up and, uh, seems to me from what I understand, uh, doing an excellent job over there and, uh, I appreciate it. And, uh, I'd also like to thank Josh for, you know, all the extra work that he does, you know, trying to make sure that our EMS is across that probably, he's probably spent a lot of time with you, helping you allow a lot. It means a lot, I guess, so.
I, I totally agree and like Mr. Flett said, we had, we did vote, uh, a week ago, a week and a half ago to hire a company to do a forensic audit. It's hired, it's done, it's voted on.
Correct.
Yeah, we, we have not signed the contract yet, but it's.
Right, yes. We voted to enter a agreement in a contract. But, excuse me for my voice, I've been sick for a week or so, but back to the, the paper ad and the cost and all the misleading figures that was put in the paper, that was stated in the paper, we'll put it that, that way. Mr. Wright, this, this total cost is how much?
The estimated total cost for everything is 113,000 dollars.
So that's everything, including the courthouse, DSS, school system, the whole getting covered. What, what we have told the school system through email, the county administrator, is they will not ask to pay any more than 40,000 dollars.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I said if there was a situation that arose that caused there to be more hours need to be spent on something there, then we could have a discussion with the school board to see if they wanted to, to help fund anymore, but we, the, the guestimation was around the 30,000 dollars we covered.
So the hourly rates in the, in the newspaper is false.
Correct.
Am I right or wrong?
Okay, they are accurate, but they're not accurate the way they were presented as it being this big blown up figure. Cause I think they were talking about, and, and, and I apologize, I didn't read that article.
There you go. You want?
No, but, uh, the, they were saying it could cost them 140, 150,000 dollars. The email that I sent Mr. Dean was we were asking for what I thought was a, a high figure of around 40,000 dollars to help with that process.
Correct.
But if something additional happened beyond, you know, they, they got into something, found something that they wanted to dig further into which required more labor, then the two boards did get together and discuss what the next appropriate action would be as far as the cost is concerned. It wouldn't stop any of that, it was just if they wanted to continue.
I think our exact, if it's okay, if I said that though, I think our exact ask of them was to pay for anything school, school related.
Only, only school related.
Nothing more, nothing more, just anything school related.
And I, I, I did pull this out since, since they mentioned this. I mean, basically the, the, the company that we chose, they're pretty experienced with this. Trying to get this in context. Estimated fees for forensic audit engagement can be challenging as observations identified from performing sound forensic procedures may lead to additional procedures to be performed. However, based on our experience with similar matters and the assumptions we have listed below, we estimate our fees will not exceed 113,000 dollars. And then they do go to list other, how they broke that down. Engagement planning was 17,005. Field work on and off site was 60,500 dollars and reporting was 35,000, which is how they get to the 113.
And that's total.
If there was additional work that had to be done, then you get into those hourly rates. For a staff, it's 250, for a manager, it's 350, and for a principal partner, a senior manager, that's the 450. That's, that's if something has to happen above kind of what we've already broken and we want to get looked at. And because this company has done so many of these, they kind of know where we are because we won't be the first locality that's ever been done by this group.
And so back to the misleading figures that, that was bringing them in. Mr. Schumaker and I sat in and interviewed these companies along with Mr. Wright. And one of the reasons why I chose to pick this company, and he can speak for himself, I think it's same, is they have no ties to the county. They're, they're based out of California. And, and that's in my opinion, what we need in this county. Somebody that has zero ties here, zero. Some of the other companies did have some ties here. Some of the other companies were cheaper, but you get what you pay for sometimes, in my opinion. But this is not out of reach for us to be able to find it, especially with the school system help, bring some trust back to the community. Like I said before, there was much needed. We need to stop misleading people in the public news, uh, on Facebook. If you, if you say you're for something, be for it in front of the newspaper. District two board member, school board member. I am saying that to, if you're not, be the same, is all I'm asking. But, uh, we set up here unanimously, all five of us, and agreed that this is what the county needs to do. So we're, we're going to do it. We've already voted to do it and we're going to do it. I don't think nobody here is going to change their mind. I will be as transparent as I can be. They told us, me and Mr. Schumaker and Mr. Wright, they will come to it, however many meetings they wanted to come us, we wanted them to come to, to report to the public on the findings of this audit. Ain't that what they say?
That's correct.
And that's all we can ask the professional people to do. Pay them, fix it and move on. That's all I want to do. I don't want to argue with the school board. If I want to be on the school board and control it, I would have ran for school board. But I didn't and I don't want to. But there is some things that need addressed. Another thing that was mentioned that this board was complaining about tutors making 20 dollars an hour. There was never a complaint, never. The complaint was 300 dollars an hour. When a tutor is paid 300 dollars an hour with federal funds, myself personally, I may be wrong, I don't think that's legal. And I think it needs looked at. That's one of the things that we address in, in this audit. So things like that, while we decided it needs to happen, the sorry thing, getting a lot of input on it, but it is the way it is. That's all I have.
Coach recommendations, County Council. County Administrator?
I only have a, I only have a couple of things, Mr. Chair. One thing I do want to, I do want to add, that was something that was mentioned here earlier, was talking about the, the input from the school system. I know the two of you were in that meeting whenever we were talking to the individual companies and, uh, one of the things that I asked, there was a couple of things I had concerns about that actually revolved around the administrator's office and that sort of thing and asked them a few questions about, hey, you know, this is one thing I want you to look at just because of what I've got concerns on internally in my office, just to make sure we're handling things correctly. And one of the offers that was made to the school system when they were here is if you have something that you want to be looked at, we will be more than happy to add that to what you need. So if you've got some input that you want to have in those areas, then, you know, for, bring it to us because we'd be more than happy to try to help you with that. So I, I think that may be some of the confusion as far as the input, but.
And if they want to add something, I have no problem with it. If they got a concern that they, just like we've been, all been told different things as what's going on, not only in the school system, but other places, sure, put it on the list.
Yeah.
That, that's all that was.
Yeah, I, I, I think that might have led to some of that confusion.
And I, I'm going to add, and I'm going to show the, four school board members already agreed to do this and they will pay for it. So one opinion is not going to matter much anyways.
Well, I'm under orders to get it done, so sure, it's going to happen anyway. Couple of quick things, I did want to thank, uh, the PSA. I had a quick discussion with them. There were some, um, of the agencies that was getting billed for water, that sort of thing. I wasn't aware of it, nobody was aware of it. I know St. Charles is one of them, they've got represented here tonight.
He's referring to Fire EMS.
Yeah, this is, this is, well, yeah, it's all Fire EMS, but, um, they've been getting regular, everyday, monthly water bills and, and that will cease at least by January. They said if there was a, a big usage for like fire department where they pulled, you know, five, six thousand gallons, they'd have to build them something, but as far as the normal use, they, they were going to stop doing that to try to help with some of the funding for, uh, Fire EMS. So I did want to thank them for that. Want to also congratulate Emily Ashley, who is a Children's Services Act Coordinator. She was actually awarded Children's Services Act Coordinator Rookie of the Year for 2025. That is a statewide award and she was chosen out of all of the new coordinators in the state as, as the Rookie of the Year. So local, uh, local person that did that. In getting back to the forensic audit, I sent all of you an email and I need to get a response on that, uh, as far as suggesting times to get with some people, um, for them to do interviews of, of the board members. I sent you that email, um, if you can get back to me on time so that I can get with I Bailey to, to get that scheduled. I know Mr. Winter. I know Mr. Leonard has responded.
He has sent you on it.
Yes. They had basically Friday from ten thirty to twelve thirty, then from three to five. I put Mr. Leonard down from ten thirty to eleven, they said it'd take about thirty minutes, so if you often give me times for that at your leisure, I would appreciate it.
I was under the impression, I had already done what there's everybody hoping to do.
Yeah, it's other three that I want to talk to.
Okay. So they said all, so, but yeah, we just need to get with those folks if there's anything else that they want to get, that they want to get covered. The last thing I got, I got several phone calls from the court system today and some other departments about the possibility that the county office is being closed on the twenty-sixth, that's Wednesday of next week. The state evidently is letting all of the court systems off, and I took with a couple of other localities, and they said they were scheduling that day too, if you'd like to take action on that. And that's all I've got.
Approve of the man, September third, twenty twenty-five, special validation, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, ready to make.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, I'm in favor.
Aye.
County Administrator, force paid, I want that issue.
Make motion, please, Bill.
Second. Motion second, I'm in favor.
Aye.
Yes, delegation?
Yeah.
Mr. Kaiser? President of ProMed. Please go off your seat, and we're gonna give these out to you guys as the start of the bill.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Eddie Kaiser, I'm the President of ProMed, Ainsley's County, and we're based out of COVID. I'm gonna try to sum this up as quick as possible, because you guys are gonna have a report in front of you. Long story short, we can approach that, and this is kind of, it needs to be addressed in Lee County as a whole. Right now, the landscape of EMS in a nutshell is going downhill dramatically, not just in Lee County or Wise County, but it's across the nation. With ever-changing insurance policies, coverage of things that people can be paid for, it's now to the point that the agencies, if someone were to call nine-one-one, the agencies can barely be paid, the way the insurance companies are doing things now. It's making it harder and harder as funds are drying up. States are running out of money to be able to fund their EMS, and it's just, it's a huge problem across the nation. So Lee County's not the only one. Wise County, from where I'm from, is going to do the same exact thing. So what I've put in front of you all is basically a plan to, a proposal, what we can offer in Lee County. In summary, that's what you're gonna see in here, is basically what we would offer as a purchase, or less, of EMS equipment that's in Lee County. We would rebrand those under the ProMed banner. And we would also dedicate coverage to the EMS area for all of Lee County that you guys see as fit. So we would guarantee ALS coverage twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, regardless of what happens. And for us to give that back to the county. With the purchase of that equipment, we would turn around and use the leftover trucks that are not needed, or that are not being used all the time, and move those to support us being able to provide the coverage for Lee County. Now, what I mean by that is, in a ratio aspect though, it takes four trucks to provide, if you have an EMS truck that's on the nine-one-one, the ratio is it usually takes four trucks to be able to run that. One truck will stay stationary as an EMS truck with all your ALS equipment providing people there, the other three trucks would support that. And be able to support your payroll, be able to support everything else because of what very little that nine-one-one truck can actually bring in. So you need a kind of a formula there in order to support it, which is what we've done with ProMed. In ProMed, when I started ProMed with my wife, we literally went to our board supervisors in our town and told them what we had. This is what our ideal is. We had looked at purchasing another agency that we were still through, so we decided to do it on our own. We gave them the promise that we would dedicate a truck with full ALS capabilities to the COVID area, which is the largest area in Wise County, and it would be available twenty-four seven at all times. No lax coverage, no anything, no rolling calls. And to this day, we have not rolled any calls over that I'm aware of for any reason. Total calls we're running, I want to say last month we ran over six hundred and eighty calls, maybe a little bit more than that, six sixty-something, the six eighty-seven in that area, that we did total for our area. We give them mutual aid to all the other agencies that we have out there in the Wise County area, and we make sure that we're available there to present this back to them and to strengthen the community there as a whole. But the only way we can do this is by having the people there, by having the good people that we have, and what we've done is we've given them incentives to stay there and work and do what we need to by offering them huge raises. The lowest paid person that I have, which you'll see in this report, as an EVO driver is twenty dollars an hour. The highest paid person is a paramedic, is thirty-three dollars an hour. And we're gonna offer that back to Lee County as well. We don't want to go in and just take all the volunteers and all the hardworking people here and cast them to the side, we need those people. So if we were able to enter an agreement with the other agencies in the county to purchase their equipment, the first thing we would do would be employ the people that are already there, make sure that they are at paid service from that going on, they serve the community that we're a part of. It is nothing to bring this under one umbrella and say this is what we have. But with that being under one umbrella, there's other costs that come into play. We have to be able to support the payroll, because we are not government-funded. We receive no subsidies from our county, we receive no anything else, we are a privately-funded company. If we go to that, then I have to be able to run other trips, those commulacent trips, the other things there that make us money. And the people that we have to deploy even from Lee County, they would be responsible to have to help do some of that. But yet, they will, there will be a truck in whatever locality they're in, and that locality, that's where that nine-one-one would be, that's what they would have to do. One day, it could be you've got this paramedic and this EMT, they're running nine-one-one. Their very next shift, we may have somebody else that are gonna be there running nine-one-one, we're gonna pull those other two people that were on the previous shift, they're gonna run commulacent trips in order to make it work. That's the formula we could use now with ProMeds, and from that point, we've grown ProMed from nothing to a multimillion dollar county list in a year. So that's what we want to try to offer back to Lee County. The coverage that we have, we're receiving phone calls all the time to go into Wise, to go into other areas to help with the nine-one-ones of those areas, we never bat an eye and go to it. So we usually have a truck, we definitely have one truck at all times, but there's multiple times we have two or three trucks that are available, we provide the backup that's needed. The other side of that is, is that you have your agencies that have to have their billing companies, they have to pay percentages out anywhere between five to eight percent, that's what most companies charge for billing. We have our own billing companies, we handle everything internally. So by doing that, we were able to save money on that aspect of it and interject it back into our agency to strengthen everything up. Right now, ProMed also can offer EMT classes all the way through paramedic classes. We can take somebody off the street and basically from day one, start training them, put them through a program, and by the end of it, they can come out as a paramedic. We have the people there certified and the equipment to train them upfront. Now, a lot of people say, well, they'll probably just pencil whip in that through. We can't do that. I've heard that rumor being brought out, we're just handing EMT cards out, we can't do that. Anybody that's been in EMT knows you have to go take that national registry test, that is, most of the time in Johnson City is where it's at, or I think Bristol might even be able to do it as well. Johnson City is where they're going for the most part. We just train them, get them into this position where they can take that test, they take the test, then they're certified in. We've took people that have had no job, that have had basically a hard time struggling trying to find their niche, and started them through this program, they've achieved it, now they're making, from hardly anything, now they're making twenty-three dollars, now we're going through this class. That's something we can offer back to Lee County. That will in turn cause this huge wheel of an economy to pull into. Lee County within, be able to take their people, you can get the tax revenue off of that person, because they're wanting to be here in Lee County to work. You're gonna see an increase in pay, you're gonna see an increase in revenue, that means they want to buy more things. And COVID is starting to see that, that same thing happen there. Right now, I think we employ fifty-seven people for ProMed as it is. We have more paramedics, more EMTs than any other agency, one single agency out there than you can really shake a stick at. I think we have, how many paramedics do we have, Charles, right? We've got fifteen paramedics on payroll, and half of them are probably there every day. So there's a huge aspect of this that we can really offer back to Lee County, but we would have to get the agencies on board as a whole to handle this. Other than that, that's really basically what we have.
Do you need to speak under KDK?
Under KDK. The best way I would put that is, my wife and I started KDK about seven years ago. And we started out with the dream to say, hey, I think we can do something with this we see a need here, to give back to the community. We started out with thirty-five hundred dollars, in seven years, we've turned it into a million-dollar agency. And we move an average of about twelve hundred people a week. By having that eyesight out there and seeing who needs what, we see people that their insurance, they say, well, they need to go by wheelchair, and you go to this person's house, and this person couldn't say a wheelchair, they need to, they really need a stretcher. So I can report that back into insurance and say, hey, look, you really need to look at this. Miss little whoever her name is has to have a stretcher in order to be transported, we barely can move her with a wheelchair. So they send somebody out to investigate, they look at it, they assess the situation, or their doctor will call in and say the exact same thing that we do, they'll assess the situation, and they'll change the level of service out from wheelchair to stretcher, or they'll say, hey, look, they really need a ambulance. So there is a difference. You can have a non-emergency transport on a stretcher, which is just somebody that is meant to be placed in a lame position, but doesn't need oxygen or medical care, they just need to be laying in a lame position for transport, then it would move over, if that was, more care was needed, then they would move them over to ambulance, and that will probably give them to take place. So we can kind of see what's going on out there, use our feelers, get people the proper care, the proper transport they need to get to their doctors, and then if they need to have that care moved, we can kind of help stem that along the way. Averaging out right now, KDK moves around twelve hundred people a week. We're spread out from basically Thomas Walker, Ewing, all the way into Danville and Remo. So we're covering about a two hundred mile swath there in all Southwest Virginia. And ProMed does not. And ProMed will go to Charlottesville, Richmond, any place in Virginia, we don't care, but our main coverage is Wise County. We are being approached constantly by other counties, Danville especially one of them, that are wanting us to bring ProMed into that area. I don't really want to do that, because we've got to strengthen home first. I'm there in Danville, I'm making money in Danville, I'm there to help the people in Danville, because they asked for it, and I haven't been able to go there. We are not prepared to go into Danville yet. My goal is, is that the counties, Wise County and the surrounding counties that I have tied us to, we strengthen those first, and then we'll look about expanding out and helping others. But right now, that's our main goal. Our main goal is to help our localities around us, and Lee County is gonna be the next target that we come after. We would like to be able to partner with you guys, do what we can to help, and from that point, if we're able to strike something up, be there to support. And if we're not, then we're okay with that, but we want to be able to offer our support to you guys, if needed.
So you're, just a little recap, you're in the proposal figure, you're saying you'd like for us to provide a place in the Pinnacle Gap area, but did I also hear you say that you'd be willing to buy the agencies, say, driving Thomas Walker, Johnson, those EMS agencies, to be willing to buy their trucks and equipment and employ those people?
Yes. What we're asking in return is, is that if we're gonna come in here, now, I'm gonna give you an example from COVID, I want to just be plain English. When we made the proposal to COVID, the proposal was, I'm gonna give you about a million dollars worth of equipment to set right here, handle the nine-one-ones area of COVID. All we're asking is for business licenses, with no subsidies from COVID, no subsidies from Wise County at all, completely privately funded, we'll handle this, but you have to be able to let us run commulacent. The proposal that we're doing to you guys is the exact same thing. I want to propose that we give you guys an ALS truck twenty-four seven to handle the calls. Now, we can't do that with one truck to handle one part of the county, I mean, you can't do it, it's physically impossible. You're gonna probably have to handle about three, and they're gonna have to be stationed out, just like your agencies are now. What we're asking in return is, that if we can purchase the equipment, don't charge us rent for the buildings, we'll put utilities if that's what needs to be done, but give us a place to put our trucks. If we have to go in here and have to start building, look at the money that's gonna take. You're talking millions, in order to build enough facilities across the county in order to do this in a huge amount of time. So a trade-off, we buy the equipment at a fair market value, we use the equipment as needed, and if it needs upgraded, then that's on us, we'll upgrade it. We give you the ALS coverage, we make sure that when you pick the phone up twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, you get people that are competent and people that can come in and handle the trips and handle the situation with good equipment at all times. That will be the trade-off. That will also, in my opinion, and other studies show too, that if you have a good EMS coverage system there, that it starts driving property value, if you start making yourselves more attractive to other businesses coming into your area. And COVID is starting to see some benefits of that. We're having, but right now, the housing in COVID is slowly starting to trickle up. And one of those things that we're seeing is, is that they've got a great school system there, but they've also got great coverage from their EMS facilities. And it has just been, you know, a wonderful thing to be a part of. We can't do that with that people. People that we employ, there are some people from County County, but the majority of people are from Wise County. That's what we want to put back from Lee County. We want the people that work in Lee County to be the ones to get those jobs first, they would have prerogatives.
I've got some good ones. I want to ask, if you did this, you said you're in Danville, would that be like an area supervisor, or how would that work? You just can't turn a bunch of people loose in there and try to manage them over the phone?
Absolutely, you can't do that. And you're right, we would, we would have an area supervisor, they would have a commander that would be more or less, that would be here, and they would be able to say, this is what we need to. Right now, the guy that runs ProMed for me, and I am not an EMT.
They would be employed by you, though.
They would be employed by me. The guy that runs ProMed for me right now is Mr. Giles Sard. Giles has been in EMS his entire adult life, this is all he's ever known. And Giles is meticulous, he gets the point across, he makes sure the training is done for everybody, we're constantly in training, our people actually have rules of them, if they don't complete so many classes through us and through our training, we'll suspend them. It's not an option. But we also have very strict things that we demand out of our people. There is this, well, I don't think I'm gonna work today. You get a couple of those people that are gonna do that, we don't need you as part of our agency, you're gonna work. If you're scheduled, you better be here. If you don't have that and a good reason why you're not here, you're probably not gonna be employed here very long, because if we do that, then we're hurting the community.
Right.
Right. If you're gonna be paying this amount of money, then you're expected to work. But we also are very kind with a poor family oriented company. My wife and I, we started this thing up with KDK, and we took that same mentality that what we built KDK off of, and put it through ProMed. Of course, we've had one or two that have come in in life, but the majority of the people that have come in, with a very, very low turnover rate. that have come in, with a very, very low turnover rate. Our office is ninety-five hundred square feet in COVER. We have a room dedicated there where, where men and women who have had children, they need to bring their kids in after school and have to have a little place for them, there is a room dedicated here, they can go watch TV, play on their phones, do whatever, get on the internet, continue their schoolwork there, and do what needs to be done until a parent can come pick them up, or their paren shift is over and they have to go home. So we are trying our best to make sure that we get back to the community so that person can stay there that much longer. Also, we're very open about what time off need that you need. If you give us a written slip, give us about a three-day notice, more likely, yeah, we can give this covered. We'll give you the option, try to get your shift covered, but your shift is predetermined a month out. These are the days you want to work, so we give you plenty of notice, give you time to do what you need to do, schedule what you need done, and if it doesn't work, something comes up, well, we're open to that. We give them sick time off, we give them vacation pay and all, it will be outlined in here. So, and it's great benefits too. We give everybody that we have coming in after ninety days, they get a United Healthcare benefits, two weeks paid vacation. And I want to preach on the benefits a little bit. This isn't some cheap athletic policy where you got a deductible that's ten thousand dollars and a copay that's a hundred and fifty bucks, and, I mean, you're just coming out with all those amounts of money for no reason. It's a fifteen hundred dollar deductible with a fifty dollar copay, a hundred dollars for specialists. And United Healthcare, you get medical, dental, vision, retirement, all with that.
Free ride, free ride in Angles if you came on?
Free ride in Angles, yes. You get two weeks paid vacation after your ninety days starting out, and you can earn one day per month off extra on top of that. So if you complete your shifts, you have more discipline areas, you complete your trainings like you need to, you can receive another day off pay on top of that. So another twelve days that you can gain there out of a year, take it when you want.
One of the questions I want, about your training. Is the training for these people free, as long as they spend so much time with you, or how does that work?
As, let's say that I hire somebody straight off the street. We, we, we fill them out, they're good candidates for this, and they start out, we're going, we're going to pay him to go to the EMT school, all right? So that's a fifteen hundred dollar class. Now, what are you getting out of that? You're getting the best equipment that you can possibly get with that. Do we pay during that time? No, this is on your own time. But we will sponsor you and go through that, and you'll give us a servitude contract. So we will waive that fee, that fifteen hundred dollars, you give me five years' worth of service. Now, as you continue to move up, if let's say you came in, you just want to be an EMT, well, you're going to have to work for five years to pay for that, or you pay for that back out of your own pocket and buy your way out of it. If they become a paramedic program, and they want to go through that, we actually offer that, we will pay for our class up to eighty percent. You'll have twenty percent invested in through that as your training continues, and you'll give us that servitude contract for us bringing that upfront for you. So you can advance your training, do what you need to do, and only have twenty percent of that in there. Once you complete that, and you have it, it's done, it's over. I mean, if you, you've served your five years. If you don't, then yes, you have to go back and pay for that. Now, through injury, illness, something of that nature, something that's uncontrolled, we'll work with that on a daily basis, but just to up and quit, well, yeah, we're coming back after you, you need to pay for this. We just wasted our time, and we needed to get service out of you in order to do that. So that's the kind of hand we play out there with you.
Typically, say you had three locations in this county, how many would be employed per location?
That one, we haven't went through the numbers.
We shot roughly twenty-one thousand, big weird.
We haven't really went through the numbers about how many people we would actually need, but at minimum, and, and we have kind of a mixed bag of what we do with ProMed, we have a twenty-four hour crew that's there, some people have elected to do twenty-four hour shifts, and some people would do twelve hour shifts. We would kind of leave that up and judge it by their, let's say we had five people that wanted twenty-four hours, but everybody else wanted twelve, well, then we're going to have to leave that up and see who's going to be there. And, and I mean, it is, it's just, it's a different ballgame when you go into those numbers specifically, but at minimum, you're going to have to have two to man that nine one one trucks. We're putting three across the county, you're looking at six people minimum that are going to be there twenty-four seven, that are going to have, and that's at minimum on that part. Well, it depends on the shifts afterwards. So it'd be a hard number to really press on, but it would also be a census thing, we have to see who we're hiring, what they're willing to work.
And I do want to mention too, the county does not own any of the EMS facilities or fire departments here, they, they, they own the property themselves.
Yes. And, and we, we're very aware of that. What we want to do is that if the board wants us to come in here and try to help out with a problem that, that Lee County's had, to try to pull the agencies together and have that talk, as bad as it sounds, have that talk and say, look, this is not about this agency to this agency, or the board, or whatever, this is about the citizens of Lee County, and what is best for them. Maybe you find out that we are the best thing that we can do to help with this situation, and maybe you don't, maybe you find out that you can handle this yourself. But we just want to put it out there that we can help you guys with this, and this is what we have to offer. And we are doing nothing more than trying to upgrade equipment and give the county the best service that we can possibly give them. Now, I think that EMS area here has done a fantastic job, but at the same time, they're facing struggles, every one of them are. And that's not just here, that's in Wise County, Wise Rescue faces struggles, Appalachia's facing struggles, everybody's big stone, it's, it's just a common thing. We can help alleviate that because we will not be constrained to what a volunteer agency or nonprofit agency has versus what a paid service is. There's a lot more that we can do that these other agencies can, and a lot more equipment that we can provide.
What concerns me is, like, we'll take Thomas Walker for example, you come in, and say, yeah, we'll show you a truck, two months down the road, you decide Thomas Walker's not for me, you take your trucks and run. Kind of like Pennington though, with, with the trucks and what have you.
Well, in this folder, and you'll find that in there, if we purchased the equipment, and we had to make that rough decision, it, it won't be taken lightly. If we had to have that, we're not going to have to take the trucks and just run. We are going to offer that back to you guys, and we're not going to go in here and say, we bought your truck for fifty thousand dollars, now I'm going to a hundred and fifty. I'm going to strangle them again, we're going to go to market value. We're going to do whatever it takes to give that equipment back to you and not try to run off and sell it to somebody else, or do whatever is needed to be done there.
I think the county itself don't own any trucks.
No.
No. So what he's thinking is, well, if you decide this ain't for us, we ain't making no money, we're out of here, after you buy our trucks up, then we're sitting here with nothing.
Well, then, if that's.
Yeah, there are contracts to this for so many years covered.
Let me see what page it's on. It's actually in your.
I guess, I think that's what you're talking about.
Right.
Let me see what page it's on.
I mean, we, we're going to redo it, obviously, but I just, I'm wanting the same thing.
Do you have another booklet?
Yes, I'll look.
Can I get your phone number?
Yes, I can give you my number here, um, it's two seven six.
Wait, you grabbed eight, I put that button.
Okay.
Three five five?
Well, it's in this way.
You love to get some luck.
I am called.
Yeah.
Late mail.
Look, ain't nobody hates your life.
Come on, man.
I'll give you my number directly, where the service is in County.
And what we're also willing to offer back to the counties as well, is that we don't even want you guys to just take our word for it. I'm inviting everybody to COVER, come see this out for yourself. The facilities we built there, we built a seven hundred thousand dollar garage behind our building, just to house the agents of by theirself. So it's not like we would take your trucks and run, they would be taken care of, they would be there to serve back through County. Now, again, I put, I'm the type of person, I'll put all my cards on the table. I cannot leave every single truck in Lee County. Those trucks will have to go run other trips and perform other duties in order to support what we're proposing. And, and that's where they will go.
Back to the years of coverage. What pages is that?
Like, like if we done this county, what, the contract part?
Yeah.
I don't make an actual contract page listed, we were just.
Yeah. We're, we're not even asking for a contract. We all want you guys to enter into something that the board would have to be responsible. That's not what we're actually asking, we're not asking for a contract. We're here to offer, what we're asking the board to do, is to pull your agencies together and have that serious talk with them and say, look, you guys are struggling, I know that the board has given the agencies a lot of money out there, and that money's drying up very quick, and more money is needed. Well, that's a burden back on the taxpayers. You have to come up with that somewhere. We want to alleviate the taxpayer from having to pay that by being able to go in here, take the trucks, we give you the coverage. On my dime, we run your nine one ones, they get the coverage that they need, but I can take that truck, use the money that needs to be done with the COMLIS trips, garner the money from that and use it to invest back into the coverage here, and then whatever's made from that, I can take, give profit to our company, buy the equipment that we need, do our payroll, and do all the things that are there.
But the trucks is not going to be stationed outside of the county?
Some trucks would.
That, that would be.
Now, that would be on the COMLIS, so some trucks would leave the county, yes, but your nine one one trucks and that coverage will be stationed in the county, and we propose to put that in Pennington. That will be a word of some of them, but you may need others in Thomas Walker, Lee County is what, seventy miles across?
It's a long trip.
It's a long trip to have to do that, to go from Pennington to Thomas Walker. So you're probably going to have to have a truck down there. We would have our main office stationed in Pennington.
Kioki's a long way.
Yes. So we will have to station those agencies out as needed. With what we've done right here, there's ten trucks in COVER right now. One truck is stationed there for nine one one, but we, there's times we made it four and five trucks that had to go out and answer the nine one one calls. We stop the COMLIS, we pull those trucks, and we go answer those calls first, we take care of them, take care of the trauma, take care of whatever needs to be done, and then we go back to do our COMLIS.
Now, where are you proposing putting something at Pennington?
Well, we want to use the old building that they had down there, and we're using the, the previous station. We wouldn't mind being able to do something of that nature, or any other things that you guys might have to recommend to us, of any kind of building that would be there, just to house the trucks. And we can store some equipment, and we would have somebody as, as basically a commander for that area that would be coming out of Pennington. We also offer what we call as QRB, is a quick response vehicle, which some agencies have and some agencies don't. We have to pick a truck that we use that give. Let's say a truck is not available, that they could be on another nine one one call, and that truck is in the middle of transport to somebody, but another call comes in. Nathan and Giles both, Nathan's a paramedic, Giles is an EMT. We pull our people out of the office if that's what it takes, we'll put them in that pickup, they will take off, they will go treat that person, administer care, and stabilize them until that truck can return from that nine one one to start a new one, if that's what's needed. There's times the COMLIS trucks are just, they're slammed, they, they're peppered up, they got more trucks than they can take care of. Then there's times that the nine one one takes over, we got to put the COMLIS on pause to take care of whatever else is needed, and that's what we've, we've done here. And I have to pull people from the office, as they're hired in, their main job is, we hire you in, if you're a paramedic, that's what I hired first. If you're an EMT, that's what I hired first, your supervisor's say. The other thing that I have is the first person that gets fired out of this will be the manager, because if I'm not getting the results that I need, the management goes first. And they're targeted right there, every person, and I tell them, the, the people that have applied for that supervisor's job, are you sure you want this? Because I am not easy to please when it comes to this, you normally perform at these levels as a supervisor, and if you can't, I'll find somebody that will. Plain and simple.
My last question. When you deal with the buildings, if, if we'd done this, that shares the building with the fire department?
If you guys were able to pull something like together, we would just use that zone, whatever you guys want for that truck. We would help with utilities, utilities is that what was needed, we just say, don't charge us any rent, we're not going to try to put a lien out against it or anything like that, we don't want any part of that. Matter of fact, your agencies can keep that building, that's what we want. Trucks come and go, real estate does. So we're not here to try to leverage anything else other than that. Just say, you know, you want to stay in our lane, this is where our, our position will be, if you're giving us a place and gracious enough to house the truck, let us do what we need to, let us maintenance, I shouldn't say maintenance, we have a garage for that, but let us stock our truck, keep supplies here, do what we need to, then we will just move on and, and operate within our line, our boundaries, and go from there. If an agency has the building and they want to sell that, well, okay, we'll leave that up to that agency. So we're not expecting every agency to come in here and say, you mesh across the board, sell everything, you know, we're just going to listen to everything that you got to say, we're going to do whatever. Some agencies say, we want to keep our building, we want to sell our equipment, some agency may, hey, we don't want a part of this, we're going to leave that up to you guys, and we'll see what we can do in order to make it work. If you come to the table with that, and that, we have to say, we need X amount of trucks, or if we're going to have it, we have to have a place to stay, we can't service this area if we don't, we'll have that conversation, we'll cross that bridge in negotiations. And we will, that's about all we have to offer. Gentlemen, ladies, my dispatch card is in there, on the back of it you'll have Giles' number as well. So if you guys have any other questions or interested in coming by, taking a look at the building, seeing what we have to have, or what we're willing to offer back to the community, what we're willing to invest, please, I implore you to come to COVER, look at it, and look what we took from nothing to what we built to the COMLIS. And then see our numbers, what we've done with the county, we're willing to offer that. Our response times in COVER were fifteen, twenty, forty-five minutes with an agency that was there before, we cut that down to way more than, than half. There are times we've had four-minute responses, eight-minute responses, and we are covering right there with the largest area in COVER, which is crossing, anybody knows anything about COVER, crossing safety region all the way to Dixon County line. So we want to make sure that we can offer it back to you guys, that when your citizens pick the phone up, and they call nine one one, there's a truck there, in a very short amount of time, with the best equipment available.
Are you, you're also serving the area of Dominion, or to Dominion Power Plant, aren't you, to St. Paul?
We do go into St. Paul some to help out, we, we offer a lot of mutual aid, but Castlewood actually takes a lot of that agency there, but our, our border goes down, if I'm not mistaken, to the train truss right below the power plant, which is right to the edge of St. Paul. So we can be called out for that, but a lot of the times, Castlewood is actually closer. Even though we're outside of the county, they still answer that area, and we have a lot of respect for Castlewood, a lot of their people work for us at ProMed. So there's times that they'll call and say, hey, look, we only have a couple of EMTs, can you supply a paramedic? Just put a truck in, go, no questions asked. And we don't build that, we let that agency take the, the call and, and bill for that, we don't even try to bill for that. We don't try to steal that trip or whatever, we make sure that they get that back, or is there a holiday? It would be the same thing here. You know, we're not trying to, we're not trying to do anything but offer care back to the county. That's pretty much a lot, sir. Is there any other questions you all might have?
I, I don't have any questions. I, I will say that I did a little background in too, and I know that Justice Swinney, who handles all the things in Wise County, is, is happy with the services they get out of COVER and ProMed.
COVER went from having the worst EMS coverage in the county, it was a huge trouble spot, to where their coverage is pretty much number one, and we did that in less than six months. And we're here into it, and we've not had any issues, any complaints from the county, any other, I, I couldn't say any other spats with any other agencies or anything like that, we're trying to get along with everybody and just offer support. As far as equipment wise, to give you an idea, the Zoll monitors, the heart monitors are like the Ferraris of monitors. A lot of people love them, and, and I think some of the places, other agencies, Zoll's the way to go, you'll hear, most of them say that, everybody has them for instance. So we're running the X Series monitor, which is a regular about thirty-five thousand dollar monitor, we've had them here. New technology's come out, they're coming out with what's called now the Z monitor. When we saw those, our people really liked them, we automatically upgraded all our equipment. Those monitors aren't even released out to the public, we're on the list, we'll have ten of those monitors as soon as they're released, paperwork signed or whatever. We want to be able to do that exact same thing, and give that state of your equipment[1794.41] all of that, the brand new. And that's what we're trying to offer back. We want to give you the state of our equipment, the top tier, best that you can possibly get. That way, there's no other, there's no struggles with the personnel. They've got stuff that they can rely on. And take it for that. If you guys have any other questions, I will quit the acting and get out of your way.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Don't have your one.
You too.
Oh, babe, this Civic Plus.
Can I do that real quick and then take a five minute recess, because I need to visit the facility? Civic Plus, if you'll recall last meeting, I had a little discussion about backing up and archiving social media posts on everything that we do here. The request was us to go take a look at what other people are doing in the school systems, said, hey, we're doing that. So I took a little time, actually found out, they are not doing that. The only people I can find that are doing anything at all as far as archiving any social media posts is next to the town in Pennington. So there's nothing out there. We don't have the infrastructure, so I'd like to revisit that if possible, because nobody's, that I can find in the county, any agencies do it.
How's the county doing?
They're actually using them, Civic Plus.
You just needed consensus.
I need an actual vote to be able to enter into that agreement to do that archiving for a year. It was 60.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
65, one.
Hundred?
Yeah. For initial setup, what's that figure?
Forty-six.
Forty-six, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. It goes down after the first year, it's a little second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both?
I abstain, because I'm not too much up on this social media stuff, so.
Motion carried. Took five minute recess. Lord appointed. Applejack's juvenile commission. So.
Is that me?
That's Rob Skelton, didn't it?
I know.
Is that countywide? What is it?
Yeah, I want to ask that we table that, because I was looking at next month, I was concentrating on next month's board. That one.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, please.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Board of Zonin Appeals.
Motion to table.
I've got to that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I was looking at Coven's, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're right.
Quick question before we go to the second one. The guy that's on it now is not interested in getting reappointed, or do you know?
I have not had any idea.
Oh, yes. Sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Hobbs, he turned in his resignation. I have found someone, Alvin Collins, he reached out to me, expressed interest in taking that position, so I'm making a motion to put Alvin Collins on.
Second.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Just go whose name, AN or LLE, you know?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
It's Alvin. Alvin?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I went answering that question there.
All right, Building Coven Appeals.
Okay.
Did you draw?
Motion to table.
Second.
Did y'all vote on that? Did I miss that?
Yes.
Got a motion to second to table, all in favor?
Aye.
Both?
I haven't talked to anybody. Have you?
I have actually been working on somebody for that for you, but I don't have a commitment yet.
Okay. Just let me know.
Yeah, they, the problem, my buddy is that they may or may not live in your district. That's what I can't figure out. So would you be open to somebody that's really close to the edge of your district?
It's a result. Hey, no problem.
I might have you somebody for that one.
So we got a. Motion to table that.
Motion to table.